Good evening. I'd like to call the order of the special common council meeting for April 30th to order. The time is 5:02. We have all alderpersons' presence except for Alderperson Coath, who is excused, and Alderpersons Kubashak and Zerflu are appearing by phone. Our first item of business is consider approval of implementation of COVID-19 small business response grant program to assist small businesses located in the city who are affected by closure order because of COVID-19. See attached. At this point, I'd like to turn this item over to Kyle Kearns, please.
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you, Alders, for attending this special meeting. Can you hear me?
Green button.
Oh, there we go. Now you should be able to hear me. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Alders, for attending this special meeting. We've acted pretty quickly in the last week to put together a grant program that mirrors Marshfield's and Stevens Point's grant program. It's a city grant program that will help to cover mortgage and lease payments for small businesses located within the city of Wisconsin Rapids. There's some eligibility criteria that you have in front of you on the draft application. Again, I want to stress that this is a draft, and there will be some slight changes that'll go through here. And the application and guidelines will likely be updated and finalized tomorrow or Monday. But essentially, again, it would cover mortgage and lease payments for small businesses with 1 to 10 full-time equivalent employees. Those businesses also must have closed or altered their operations due to the pandemic that we face and have done so after the March 17th timeline, which was the institution of the restriction of gatherings of 10 or more. There are some other eligibility criteria, one of which includes having a physical location outside of the home, again, within a brick and mortar building. The maximum amount that they can submit for the application would be $1,500. And I would suggest, from a total dollar amount, if the city does want to participate in this grant, that it be either $75,000 or $100,000. I will note that the city of Stevens Point and Marshfield both funded a $100,000 grant program with maximum grants of $2,000. I think in talking with Angel, who's the Heart of Wisconsin Chamber of Commerce Director, that a $1,500 grant would be applicable to Wisconsin Rapids, but certainly if you wanted to mirror something similar in the surrounding communities, $2,000 would be appropriate. Again, Angel is here and can speak to the need with regards to businesses in the community. There are several that have pursued other sources of funding through the federal government but either haven't got a reply or did not receive funds through the PPP program and the SBA advance. And so I think there certainly is a need for this grant. And again, I think it will be well-received within the community. To give you an idea, the city of Stevens Point, when they unveiled their grant about two weeks ago, they had about 65 applications within the first day, and now I think they're up to 170, and only about 80 businesses will receive funds. So certainly, I think that when referencing that neighboring community, it verifies the need. I want to note that in terms of changes in front of you, the -- well, I'll just walk them one by one. We are going to add a section that clarifies, so this would be at the end of -- well, the beginning of page two, that the months of March, April, and May will be covered, and we are going to remove the language regarding a proration of March. I think it makes sense to cover the entirety of March as well as April and May, and I think would add an administrative burden in having to prorate different mortgage payments for the month of March. So I think it's just simpler to cover the entire month. Furthermore, down the application on page three, I have moved item eight up to item three. It's basically clarifying that mortgage and lease payments previously paid shall submit proof upon the submission of the application. Again, just verifying that they've paid those. We want to see paid receipts before we would issue the grant. And then I've added what would become item 10, and that's that the city will send an IRS Form 1099 miscellaneous form to comply with federal requirements for, again, miscellaneous income on taxes at year-end. I think that summarizes at least the changes. The last thing I will note is that the Chamber of Commerce has agreed to partner with the city and perform the initial screening and administration of the grant. So they will actually, because we're limited in staff, they will actually administer the grant, check for eligibility, and then send applicants that are eligible through the Community Development Office and in working with myself, Tim, and Sue to verify a few things from an eligibility standpoint before we would then release a check to them in whatever amount that was awarded. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
So how many of these businesses do we think exist within the city? You mentioned that Stevens Point had 65 applicants within the first couple of days. How many total would we have over the entire span of the application process?
Yeah, I would expect probably not the same volume initially, but close to it. I would expect anywhere from 30 to 45 in the first day. Marshfield had about 35 within the first half a day, so a little bit less than Stevens Point had, and I think we would probably fall in a realm very similar to that. I think Angel, if you'd elect for her to come to the podium, she can also answer in terms of the business need as she has communicated with a lot of these businesses.
Yeah, if you'd like to. And again, one of my main questions here is how many of these businesses exist within the city?
Sure.
Thank you, everyone. Again, my name is Angel Whitehead. I'm the President for the Heart of Wisconsin Chamber of Commerce. So to roughly answer your question, there's still a lot of storefronts that are completely closed at this point, as we know. Tattoo parlors, hairstylists, just to name the two that are most relevant at this time. None of those are able to do any kind of work at this time. To give you -- I can't give you a general number, but I can tell you that just within some of my knowledge, there's at least 50-plus businesses that have been affected that have contacted me just within the last few days, whether that be restaurants, completely closed storefronts, or they're closed, but they're doing only online capacity at this time. So that's just the few conversations we've had, the business briefings that we've had with, in conjunction with the Wood County Health Department and the city of Wisconsin Rapids. We have 100-plus individuals representing different businesses from different areas join those, and a lot of the questions are about funding. We've had quite a few that have participated in a survey from that business briefing that have elected that they've participated with the SBA or the PPP, the Paycheck Protection Program, excuse me, and they still haven't seen any funding or any confirmation at this point, whether they're approved, they're in process. So we've gotten a lot of phone calls that are just in relation to, is there any additional support available? Is there anything we can do as a community? We're worried because we may pay our mortgage, but we don't pay any of our other bills at that time. And as we know, the supply is really important, especially if you're talking about a convenience store or if you're talking about a restaurant. They have to pay those things within 15 days of their initial orders. Now, graciously, some of those distributing companies have pushed that out a little bit longer, but again, they're still really lacking in funds. So I think that this would be a great opportunity for us to step forward and help those local businesses, as my biggest concern is this will be the closure of many storefronts in our community.
Thank you. My thoughts on what was just mentioned and the number of businesses that could possibly apply for this, I think it's a great program. I think we do need to support our local businesses. And with that being said, I think the 100K would be more appropriate at the $1,500 so that as many businesses as possible could take advantage of the program. And then the second question I had would be, where is this money coming from, from a city perspective? Where are we pulling it from?
Yeah, I think I would ask if Tim's on the call. I'm not sure if he is, but for Tim to address that.
Sir, can you hear me?
Yep, I can hear you. Yes, we can hear you, Tim.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, $100,000 has come out of our general fund balance. We have reserves for, you know, obviously for cash flow purposes, for investment purposes, and also for emergency-type situations such as the COVID or any unanticipated expenditures. Looking at our fund balance, we have healthy reserves, and I think that it would -- we could take the $100,000 out of our general fund reserves.
Anyone else like to speak? Mr. Rehm?
Just, I guess, some thoughts and where it -- I understand the intent of what's trying to be done. A problem I have with it is the phony baloney stuff we get fed out of Washington of where this money is coming from, that we're supposed to get this, but -- and lobbying groups are there from the Chamber, a big lobbying group in the country. And money is not coming down like it's supposed to. They dumped the Oversight Committee that's supposed to be there in charge of oversight, overseeing this. A lot of money's going to the big business corporations and that. The small business people and individuals even in their own homes are being left out of this. Some will say, well, you got $1,200. Well, $1,200 in some cities isn't paying the person's rent, let alone a mortgage payment. Here it probably does. But they've let the small business people down, they've let the individual people down, and now it's pushed down so if we don't do something, we become the bad guys, which I don't think we are if we would turn it down. It's another show of the federal government shirking their responsibilities, passing the buck, and when you got Moscow Mitch out there saying, let the states go broke, this is just about funneling it on down somehow to let the communities go broke. I'm not saying there's not a need for this money, but it's where the money comes from. And understands there's bills to pay. But I also understand at our last meeting, asking so the property owners could be -- not have to pay their property tax until October 1st without penalty, where the city agrees upon it, but it was left, then the county could still say no. So here's another one. Oh, yeah, we say residents should have that extra few months to pay, but the county can say no. Here we're taking this extra money, not extra money, but here we have this money to give to these businesses. And I don't know, something just doesn't shake out. To me, the whole thing doesn't smell right. It's not like a total dead skunk in the road, but it's getting close on how this money is coming. And I think it's more apropos for us to demand of the federal government and our representatives that this money come down to the small businesses, and it comes down to the individuals in this country that need it, and the health care be provided for individuals, for people in this country that need it. Before we support these big businesses, they're protected by bankruptcy law, yet we give them billions and trillions just about. It's set up for big businesses how to protect themselves, to go through it. And when it gets to the end, they file bankruptcy and they restructure, and they stay in business. Pay what they can, not pay what they don't. So I think it's just because of a failure of our federal government and maybe state government representatives providing assistance all the way down through the chain of command to everybody in this country. It becomes easy somewhat for us at times to just come up with and, yeah, this is the good thing to do, and it maybe is the right thing, or because nobody else is. But it still becomes out of taxpayer money, and so is all that money that's sitting in I hope those guys all out there are going to brag how big the debt is come election time in the fall and how it's going to be paid for. There shouldn't be a nickel coming back to us because there ain't going to be no more money left come next budget, next year. So I just, I'm tore on this because I don't think it's our responsibility to do. And the failure has been with the federal government and where the money has gone to. And again, the failure that they didn't need the oversight as soon as that thing was signed, our glorious president says, it's just recommendation. Don't mean nothing. Am I upset? I'm damn upset as much as these business people are by what's going on. I do pay attention to politics. Right is right and wrong is wrong, and we've been wronged from the start of this. We've been wrong since the start of this thing, back in January, even December, and then we're told it's a hoax, and then some miraculous thing's going to happen that'll disappear. And now we're told the other day, three double shots of Lysol a day. That's what you need. When's somebody going to tell the truth? I'm trying to right now. And I don't like that we don't have the final version in front of us that we're going to vote on. I don't like that. It's a draft. A draft is a draft. A draft comes back for final vote, as far as I'm concerned. We don't insert things, and then it's the final thing is tomorrow or Monday. That's ridiculous. That should have been sitting in front of us tonight, and everybody should have had all the information before they even showed up today on what was done a month and a half ago, I believe, at March 16th. Again, the ship that's sailing in Washington, it's got a bigger hole in it than the Titanic sitting on the bottom. It's got to be cleaned up. And maybe it's time people from local government take over and run for them jobs. Because they got a hell of a lot more common sense than those bought-out son of a guns that are out there now, bought out by these big lobbying groups. And then it gets pushed back to us. Then it gets pushed back to us. Well, I've been pushed a lot in my life, and I've been pushed to the wall a lot in my life, but I've come back from the wall every time. If it was cancer, if it was when I was on strike, when I was short of money. So I ain't afraid of one of them sitting out there in Washington. And I'll be damned if I'll take a penny from any of them to get my vote. Because they're all bought. The common, ordinary working person in this country has to rise up and take this government back. And that doesn't mean that we just go back to work because we don't like safer at home. We have to change the command that's there. And we got to beat this COVID thing. We can do it. Safer at home has been working. So, you know, I could just ramble on because that's what it's becoming, but I just, it's easy to say yes, it sounds good, but I think keep in mind who has dropped the ball that we're at this point, because it shouldn't be that. And if it is that the states can go bankrupt, that that's the best thing to happen, I hope we all remember that come election time, too, of who said for that to happen. And some of these big lobbying groups are supporting that person that said to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rehm. Mr. Bemke?
I have just a couple of questions, maybe for Kyle and for Angel, but first of all, the draft, how long do you anticipate before this would be ready to roll out? And the second question is, is how are you going to roll this out? I know you have members, but how do you roll it out to the non-members? How do we get this out in the community?
Yeah, so with regards to the draft, it's in a draft form because the information that I'm receiving is constantly changing. So for example, I just talked to Josh Miller with regards to some headaches that they've seen in their grant, and so I put together an attachment page that is actually not part of the application, but that clearly identifies what documents are required when you apply for the grant. So that was one of their headaches. Another one of them was they didn't define what a full-time equivalent employee is. So on the front of this attachment page is the definition of a full-time equivalent employee. So there's a benefit to have the ability to make some of these changes quickly, and that's why, you know, this attachment page was not part of the council packet. But it's something that I'd like to include as part of the application so that it provides clarity, and on the back end, when we administer the grant, we're not having to answer all these questions from the businesses. It's clear, it's concise, you know, they know what full-time equivalent employee means and whether or not they meet that requirement. And so that's why it's in a draft form. And I would ask that we, you know, we at least have some leeway to make minor changes. Another thing in talking with the city attorney was that on page two, at the end of, or at item eight, that we identify that financial statements submitted by businesses be kept confidential because some of that material is very sensitive to them. So if they're submitting that information, that we want to note that on the application. In regards to your second question, we look to administer the grant primarily using a software program. So Stevens Point administered it using Survey Monkey, and that, I think, allows for easier administration, document management, and so forth. We also would allow for the submission of the applications via electronic means in an email or PDF form and to submit that to the chamber. So those are the two main ways you can submit the application. With regards to marketing the grant, we're looking to do a press release tomorrow that would provide the specifics or the basics of the grant and then provide a link to the chamber page citing that on Monday, the grant application would become available, and they can, right, they can save that link, and so Monday morning, they can keep checking to see when that Survey Monkey site is up and running and begin the application. So, you know, we'll use Facebook, we'll use the city page, we'll use Angel's page to get the information out. Again, with regards to a press release, it'll be sent to all the local media outlets, and hopefully we'd get some interviews and some media time with them as well. Angel, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, I just wanted to elaborate on that. Thank you, Kyle. So besides the things that Kyle mentioned, we're also, through the whole COVID-19 process, we've been opening all of our resources to all businesses, right? I know there are some services that we restrict just to our member base, but since this started, we've been about all businesses at this point, trying to help and promote them, whether they're a member or not, and that would be the same process for this. We also have a mass communication email platform that we have that has over 1,800 contacts, and not all of those are members. So we plan on pushing that out as well. We have some contacts within the county and some of the other entities that have larger mailing lists, and they've offered to participate, to send that out, too. So even though it may not necessarily, some of those entities service broader areas such as ourselves, we want to get the word out, and multiple organizations are very open to sharing that information for us so we can get it out quickly and very fast.
Thank you. Anybody else have any further questions? Alderperson Veneman, and then Mr. Kellig.
Yeah, I agree with Jake in terms of trying to get the 1,500 to as many businesses as possible that way, but my question, I guess, to Kyle would be, when Marshfield and Stevens Point went with the $2,000 amount, and you said that they had about 50 applicants already? So if, what happens if you, do they lower the amount then? If you end up giving the amount, say you have 60 qualified people, do you go, is the plan to divide it equally then, or do we cut it off at a certain point?
Yeah, so Steve has pointed out that first in this, they had to determine eligibility and need, and if they didn't, it comes to a certain basis, and if you didn't meet the eligibility criteria, you were thrown out, and you were put back in the cycle. And if, you know, let's say you didn't submit something that was required, you were asked to submit, and then once you did submit it, you were back in the cycle. Marshfield's doing a little bit different, and we're actually copying Marshfield's process with regards to random selection. So I think we would have a deadline, which, you know, if we released the grant Monday, we would have a deadline for Wednesday, very quick, but again, I am particularly particular to this.
Was that not on? Sorry about that. And then on Wednesday, we would sort through eligibility, and we would create a pool of eligible applicants, and we would add up their requests, and if their requests exceeded the amount funded for the program, we would do a random sample.
Mr. Kellig?
I agree with what Tom was mentioning, and I have a hard time approving, I'll approve it, vote for approval, but I have a hard time approving a draft, and I understand what you're saying. I can see drafts coming to committee where we make adjustments and then go on to the council. But the problem is timeliness. I mean, these businesses have been closed, they need the money, and so I would say, vote yes for this, but in the future, I will not vote on a draft at a common council meeting. And I agree, this random selection, so how are you going to do? I think your question is very good, because how are you going to do the random selection? Is it every fifth one or every 10th? How are you going to do that? I'm just curious.
We'd probably use an online random selection generator. So we'd probably give each applicant that's eligible a number, and then we would randomly select if it was only 50 that could receive the funds. We would ask the random generator to spit out 50 of those numbers, and those would be the ones that would receive the funding. With regards to the draft form, the primary reason that it says draft is so that if the media or somebody else gets a hold of this, they know that it's a draft form, and these are not the eligibility criteria. So technically, this information, when it's provided to you, is public record, and so that's why you see the draft form no different than a developer's agreement that comes before this body. You know, this body has the option and the opportunity to make changes and add different requirements, and you can approve it with the requested changes that I've identified tonight in a final form, or you can add a condition on stating that, you know, staff has the ability to, you know, make minor changes as long as they're not, you know, with regards to the eligibility criteria, the total dollar amount, and the fund amount. You know, so there are different ways you can do it, but I will say again, you know, it's a benefit to us to have the flexibility to reach out to surrounding communities, to have others look at this program and get some of the tweaks out, even on the council floor, rather than having a final document before you that then, you know, would be difficult to make those changes after approval or on the floor.
I trust you and Sue and Tim will work those changes out, and I feel comfortable with that.
Sure.
And I also like what you're doing with the chamber, because I think having them filter at first filter at first, and going through and scrutinize it, it provides one more group involved in that decision-making, rather than just the city. And then passing it on to you, and then if it's a random selection, I think no one can say that one, one business was favored over another. But the, the process, I think, is, is a very valid one. So I just wanna make those comments.
Thank you, Mr. Kellogg.
I guess I also, I'd like to, if I could indulge me for a moment. My first day in office, I approached Kyle, this was last Tuesday. He, he had already started, he had printouts, he was already starting to think about this, and Attorney Schill, and Finance Director Tim, and Angel from the heart, they all jumped on board, and this was all put together since last Tuesday. And I cannot express my appreciation, the time and effort that they put in to put this together for our local businesses, and then ultimately the council willing to meet tonight to discuss this. So thank you.
Mr. Kubashak or Mr. Zerflu, do you have any comments or questions?
Nothing from Zerflu.
How about, Mr. Kubashak, do you have any comments?
No comments from Kubashak.
Okay. Mr. Zerflu?
Negative, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Catna?
One last question. So if an applicant, it says in here, if an applicant shall, within 30 days, provide proof the city that the funds are utilized for monthly commercial building loan mortgage or commercial building rent lease payments, if previously not paid, then it talks about the acceptable proof. If that proof is not submitted within 30 days, it says corrective action will be taken. What is that corrective action? And, yeah, I'll follow up after that, but what's the corrective action that will be taken?
I would ask for, for Sue to chime in. We haven't necessarily clarified, clarified it, because it would likely be handled on a case-by-case basis, you know, depending on what they've submitted. So if they've submitted something, you know, a check that says paid on it, you know, we might have to determine if that meets that criteria or not versus a statement balance. But if Sue, if you're on the line, could you comment on that question?
Right, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Right, I would, I would think first we would, if, if they did not in some way comply with the application, either giving us erroneous information or not providing the documentation necessary, we would probably send a demand letter to them explaining that we need that information, allowing them a few days to do it. If not, contained in the policy would be that we could add that as a special charge to their tax, on the tax roll. I guess that would be at least one way to preserve our ability to get that money back. We could also go to small claims if we want to. I guess there's a couple of different remedies that we would use, same as if we would want to obtain a money judgment against someone who owes the city money for other reasons. But, you know, I guess, you know, depending on the circumstance, obviously, we're going to be reasonable in, in allowing them time to get that verification. But if they don't, then we have a couple of ways to try to enforce or get that money back.
Thank you. What I would like to see, based on the options that Sue said, is something in here that states that if they don't comply with those requirements, that we do just add it to their tax bill. I would hate to, I, I don't expect anybody to do this, but if we did get in the situation, small claims just sounds like it would be more of a headache than just simply adding it to their tax bill to recoup that money. And with that said, I've, I've obviously stated my support for this. I, I have no more questions. I'm willing to make a motion to approve the implementation of a COVID-19 Small Business Response Grant Program for a total fund amount of $100,000 in $1,500 individual grants.
Thank you, Mr. Catna. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Veneman. Is there any further discussion or questions? With that, I would entertain, we'll just do a voice vote, and then if there's any negatives, then we'll ask who, who voted in the negative. So, all in favor? Any opposed?
Aye.
So we have Mr. Rehoom as a negative, and I think that was the only negative, correct? Okay, so motion carried. I'm sorry, go ahead, that's your job.
Motion carried. Six ayes, one nay.
Thank you. And our next item of business is consider for approval a revision to the city's emergency paid sick leave policy originally implemented on March 16, 2020. See attached policy. Tyler, by chance, is Morgan online? Excellent. Morgan, can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Morgan. Thank you.
Okay.
Can you update the council on the change to the policy that was originally adopted previously?
Yeah, so just based off of feedback that I had received from staff, I thought that it would be nice to open up the policy a little more, to be more accommodating and flexible to staff's certain needs that they have, which is what this policy reflects. We are opening up where previously you could only use 40 hours for childcare, now you can use the full 80 hours. We are including, if somebody has a reduction in hours, they can supplement their income with this 80 hours of leave. And we're kind of just including it if maybe somebody wants, needs to quarantine, or feels safer quarantining due to somebody in their household being high risk, this would allow them to use this benefit as well.
Thank you, Morgan. Does anyone have any questions? Oh, sorry, Mr. Catna?
Morgan, have we had anybody take it, or what's the amount of people who have taken advantage of this policy thus far?
I don't have an exact total, but it's, I'd say roughly about 20 to 30 people have taken the advantage of this benefit at this time.
How many more people are we making it available to that it wasn't previously, or expanding this to?
Um, so this, this benefit was always available to all staff members. It just maybe didn't accommodate to certain situations. This would then open up to all staff as well, and in total, just the ones that I'm aware of, that, you know, maybe there's more who haven't contacted me as of yet, but in total, I would say, for sure, it would help like five people at this time.
Okay, thank you. I'm in favor of this. I, I think it's a very generous policy compared to other policies I've seen in the, in the private sector. My only concern would be that, one of the things in here is people who have children, if the school is closed or the place of care, they're able to utilize this. I think a lot of people do have kids, and most schools and take cares are closed at this time. I would just be worried that if we, this would go too far, and people would take too much advantage of it, but I do trust in our city employees that that wouldn't be the case. So I am in favor of this. That would be my only thought on it, is that we, we don't wanna have a, a non-functioning city, because everyone takes advantage of the policy. So I would just, if there's any elaboration of how we determine that, or what the screening process is?
Um, really, so far right now, it's just been kind of on a case-by-case basis, as I've been connecting with people to determine, like determination and everything. You know, it is expected that if they are taking off to quarantine for maybe a high-risk family member in the household, that we would, you know, need some sort of documentation or determination to verify that it would be somebody in the household versus just taking time off, or, you know, if that person really is considered high-risk to the situation, same as, you know, with the child leave. You know, they, it's expected that basically you don't have any other option kind of thing going on. It is also noted in the policy that when these 80 hours are of leave are used up, it, the benefit does not replenish. So kind of a use your time wisely as you need it, if anything could come up day by day.
Thank you. And, and one final question, is there any provision in here? I, I've seen similar policies where if there's a state of emergency in the city and this is a necessary employee, that we could call them back? Not saying that we would, of course, this would be in the case of emergency. Is there any way, or is there a provision in here that we could put in there for that in, in case of emergency?
Um, yeah, that verbiage could be added to the policy.
Thank you. And, and again, the only reason I make that point is because we do have, we, we are a government, we do need to remain functioning, and we're offering this to all employees, which I think is great. But if we were to come across an emergency where we needed those employees, and some of them have specific skills that can only be performed by them, that we do have a clause where we can call them back, not permanently, but perhaps it's for a specific emergency issue, as stated. So I would like to see some clause in there like that, just so that we protect ourselves and we, from an HR standpoint, aren't getting ourselves in a situation where we need them, but we have, we put this policy out and we can't call it back. So, that's all my thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Catna. Mr. Rehoom?
I guess, just a question, maybe I missed it. What's the, I guess, difference in this, the updated version here compared to the other one, in as far as people that have vacation time versus this sick leave time? You know, I realize people don't wanna use their vacation for this, but, uh, as all the person, Catna said, this is a fairly generous proposal that's out there. So what's, um, obviously, and I, I'm sure people don't wanna, if they, if they can get the benefit with sick leave pay, they don't wanna have to use vacation, but, you know, it's, uh, there is an opportunity of that way, too, for people to take off. That's all. Just, it, it just, a thought, but I guess a question, what is, you know, what, what, what thought would there be to do that? There, I mean, is there any thought that somebody have to use vacation pay before this? Or even if that, or even if that could be done?
Under the policy, no, this is an extra benefit. There's no requirement to use any other accrued leave or anything like that. It's, it's an additional benefit, and the pay would be in addition to any accrued leave that they would have.
It's, it's another one of those, that it is, there is, with FMLA and whatever, there are means in that to go through, but this, again, is just, it's an added, uh, benefit, uh, that, uh, if it's used, it comes out of the, um, taxpayers' wallet. So it's, you know, it's, I understand the reason not to. I understand that this is a, a better way and a more acceptable way of doing it. It's just, again, to keep in mind that it's, uh, again, in the situation, the times that we're in, and what everybody's going through, that, it's a tough situation. And as us, as local government, we have the means to, in a lot of cases, just ask, or take the money from the people, more of it. And so, there are ways to, um, that people can have the time off, but there are ways that they do have, uh, subsidized, taking that time off, too, by benefits that they already do have, so. And I realize the reasons not to, but it's, again, um, through this, a benefit, extra, I hope everybody realizes, it's an extra benefit that's being provided when there are, what could be means that, uh, people could take off. Obviously, it'd be changing vacation time that they have planned for something else, but this is a very unusual time that we're living in, hopefully in our lifetimes. It's gonna be the only one like this, and it'll be 100 years or whatever, till it gets like this one again. But I doubt that, but we'll see. But, uh, we have the means that we can do that, and I'm sure that, I'm sure that it'll pass, but it's just, uh, there's a lot of people that are being asked to sacrifice a lot with no means to, asked to get any benefits from anywhere. So, I hope we all, not just sitting here on the telephone, but however, if the public's listening and whatever, that, uh, they all pay attention to that. It's, uh, there's a lot more people out there that can't pay the bills than ones that we've been addressing this evening. A lot more people. And those people are the ones that are paying the tab. They're paying the tab for all of it. The ones that can't pay aren't getting a penny of this, but more's being taken from them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rehoom. Anybody, Mr. Catna?
One more thought. At the end of this policy, it says the emergency paid sick leave will expire June 30, unless extended by further emergency declaration or terminated earlier. I guess I'd like, my first thought was that we align with the governor's Safer at Home order, which I believe expires May 26. I wouldn't see if, if the state opens up, I wouldn't see why we would need to have this run until June 30. The other thought is, the last part there that says, unless extended by further emergency declaration or terminated earlier. What would the terminated earlier consist of? Is that us coming together like this and saying the policy's done? I feel like we wouldn't wanna give something and then take it back. We wanna get it right at first. So that, that would, that would be my question, is if the state opens up and the Safer at Home order is, expires, I don't see why we need to have this go until June 30.
Um, this is Sue, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I think, you know, there still could be people that are, are suffering, you know, might still have an illness after that time. know, might still have an list after that time, or might still be subject to quarantine. There still might be, you know, maybe certain childcare issues that remain in terms of people reopening, or maybe people not wanting to take, you know, their, take care of children. So I don't know if it necessarily coincides with the end of the Safe At Home order. I think, so I guess I want to make that point. And then, unless terminated earlier, could be, you know, that would be action by, by you. Let's say at the May council meeting, you decide that, you know, now you want to change it, or at a special meeting, you want to terminate it. That's just some general language to, to, you know, anticipate that it's not actually, absolutely a guarantee that this is going to be there till June 30, or it's going to, you know, extend beyond June 30. But I guess those are my thoughts. I don't know if Morgan has any thoughts on that?
No, I agree to that.
The June 30 date was, actually, back in March, when we did the first one, I think that was, I think, I think what city had a very similar policy, and that was a date that they had had. And we thought that was a reasonable date back then. But, you know, I guess, you know, other than that, there's still no magic date to the June 30.
What, okay, so that makes more sense to me now. And we already have, which we do, a policy in place to June 30. Like I said, I'd hate to take it back. But I guess what we should have done in retrospect is maybe set it to coincide with the stay-at-home order and then have the option to extend it. But we've already went there to the June 30, so we might as well stand by that now. Again, I am in favor of this. The only thing I would add to it is that we do have a provision in there that we can call back employees for emergency situations, and whatever that language would be, I think would have to be written by HR or Sue. I'm not sure what that would look like, but I would just like to see that provision in there in case we do come across that. As a government, we may need to call someone back for an emergency situation.
I will, if nobody has anything else to say, I'll make a motion.
So, first of all, you're talking about a virus, that more than likely, they've been quarantined, and now you want to bring them back into the workplace and infect more people?
No, that's, I'm not talking specifically to the virus. I'm talking to other points of the plan, like, for example, if a child is out of school, that could be a reason they use this policy. I'm not talking specifically about bringing people, I would definitely not want anybody who has the virus to come back in contact with the public.
I think there's a lot of things we're missing in this policy. I think adding the extra week for the employees right now is a good thing. But I think there's some things we're missing in the policy. I really would like to see this go back into the committee. We can approve this tonight, go back to committee, and finish this, because there are some, in my opinion, there are some things that are missing. So, thank you.
Well, with that, then, I will make the motion to make the revision to the city's emergency paid sick leave policy originally implemented March 16, 2020, with the stipulation that it does go back to committee for revision this coming month. Yeah. No, I think we should approve it tonight and make a motion to approve with that.
I'm, I'm in agreement. We should approve this. I would like, I would like to have a vote on this tonight and see it approved. But I think, I'm not recommending, I would like to see this go back into committee for more discussion after, after we approve what we have here tonight.
Correct. And that's, that's what I'm making a motion to as well, that we approve tonight, but this be a discussion at the next HR committee meeting.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Second by Bemke. Mr. Kubashak, do you have anything to add?
I guess, yeah. Point of order. You can't make a motion to approve this and then have it retaken up at committee. We can retake it up at committee. I can absolutely throw it on the committee agenda, and actually, I intended to, but that cannot be in the motion.
This is Sue. I think, I think the intent was to revise the current policy to be more inclusive or more expansive. And then you also want to look at it, look at this policy and possibly expand it even more. But they definitely want to at least do this part today. That's what my understanding is of what the motion is. But I'll, I guess you guys can...
Yeah, I can...
I don't know whether I'm right or wrong on that.
I can separate those if need be, where we just have the approval, and then I make a recommendation to committee separately, if that is the proper order.
So you're making a motion to approve the, the policy as written tonight?
Yep.
Mr. Bemke, do you approve that, modifying that? And then, then you can refer it back and put it on your committee at a later date, if I'm correct, Attorney Schill?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion and a second. So, Mr. Kubashak, anything further?
No, Mr. Merritt, thank you.
Mr. Zerflu?
That's a negative. Thanks for that.
All right, thank you. So we have a motion and a second to approve the revised policy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? So...
Motion carried. Six ayes, one nay.
And then also, for, following the agenda, we should have, on the first item relating to the grant, we should have approved the grant program first. And then the next item was to approve funding for that grant. So I think you identified it, Mr. Catna, in your motion to approve $100,000 towards that grant. But I think maybe we should separate, keep that original motion, and then potentially make a second motion for item four on the funding of that, to allocate the funds for that.
So I should have made my motion for item three?
You can keep item three the same, but I think item four, we should take, make a second motion to approve allocating $100,000 towards this grant program. Yep, yes, please.
So item three is to implement the program, and item four is to allocate the funding for it. So you approved, your motion was to approve the implementation with the dollar amounts of up to $100,000 with the individual grants being $1,500. And item four is now we need to allocate that money. Makes sense?
Yep.
Okay.
So then I will make a motion to allocate the money to fund the COVID-19 Business Response Grant of a total of $100,000 at $1,500 a grant.
So we have a motion for the allocation of the funds.
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Veneman. Any further discussion on this motion?
Your Honor?
Yes, sir. Yep, yes, sir.
I'm just wondering if we should identify a fund. I thought someone said contingency before.
That is correct. I believe Mr. Disorsy did say it would come from contingency. Is that correct, Kyle?
Sure. If, this is Tim. Yeah, it'll come out of our contingency or fund balance. And actually, I'll be sending a budget amendment resolution, the two-day Finance Committee meeting, that'll include the official transfer of these funds to a designated expenditure account.
Does that...
It.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Kubashak?
Yeah, I'm good as well, thank you.
Or Mr. Zerflu. Okay, thank you. And is that okay to add contingency into your motion?
Yes.
Mr. Veneman, is that okay to adjust?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. There's no further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Okay, so...
Motion carried. Six ayes, one nay.
I want to thank Community Media and our Tyler from IT to pull this off tonight for us on the technology end. Thank you, council, for coming in together, and those participating on the phone. With that, we come to item number six, which is adjournment. We have a motion by Ray Oom, second by Catna to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.